...to the five, the United States of America. Considered a republic for which it stands, one nation of God. Indivisible and liberating justice.
So, number four, approval amendment.
Yes, there is one amendment removing Athletic Director Rose's report from the reports.
Item eight point five.
Mr. Rose at middle school track meet, he's got parent teacher conferences, so I don't have to worry about it.
I recommend we approve the meeting agenda with the rule item eight point five for April tenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Call those in favor?
Aye.
Number five, amendment.
Changes, Tom?
Thank you. Just there for your.
Make motion with the minutes with March.
Twenty second, call those in favor? Aye. Correspondence.
Yes, we do have correspondence. We have a very nice card from the Lakeview High School Horticulture Floral Design Group. Your superintendent Cahill, Mrs. Melsis, and board of directors, thank you so much for allowing us to take our horticulture field trip. We had a great time, saw a tremendous amount of interesting things in the horticulture industry. It gave us a lot of new knowledge and ideas for future careers. Thank you again, Lakeview High School Horticulture Floral Design and Mrs. Bauer. So, very nice card here, signed by all the students. So, pass it, take a look at it, and of course, Mrs. Bauer is here this evening. We're gonna have a report about that field trip, and we're looking very forward to that.
Just moving along, public comment. Okay, reports.
Well, this evening, Mrs. Warner, go ahead.
Okay, I have two young men here. Luke is our speaker tonight, and he is for Ms. Ramsey's class, but Mrs. Ramsey is at parent teacher conferences. So, one of my conversations with Mr. Cahill, because she would really like to be here. And then Luke brought support, and he brought Brother Michael. And Mrs. Ramsey's class was asked to do a report, and Luke, who was, what did she tell you about who you could do the report on?
Anyone, but we can't do the same person as another person, that's it.
So, you could pick anybody you wanted?
That's dead.
That's dead, okay, that's a good clarification. And then, and you picked who?
I picked Henry Ford.
Okay, so we'd like to have you come over here, let's stand right up here, buddy. And you can get your board if you want to, and I'd like you to start your speech. Do you need, do you want Michael to hold your board for you?
Yeah.
Michael, come on over here, that way more people can see it. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Hello, everyone, I will be talking about Henry Ford, so here we go. Henry Ford was born July thirty of eighteen sixty-three, Greenfield, Michigan, in the United States. He didn't work on his farm, because he was more of a tinkerer. His mother and father were William Ford and Mary Ford. Mary dies in eighteen seventy-seven when Henry was fourteen years old. Soon, Henry moves to Detroit to work for Edison, Illuminating, and Corcoran for the Drydocks Company. Then, in nineteen oh-one, he created the first car called the Quadricycle. Later, he upgrades the Quadricycle and calls it the Model T. Then he starts his own company. His company is doing great, and he bought a warehouse in Brazil and called it Fordlandia. In Fordlandia, they sold over a million cars. Then Henry is invited to a race, and he wins it by taking tight turns. In nineteen twenty-two, his child Edsel was born. Then, when he was fourteen, he started working on the company with his dad. Next, Henry creates the spark plug, which you can use for your car. Then, in nineteen forty, he creates the V-eight engine. Then, in nineteen forty-one, his child Edsel dies of stomach cancer. Then, Henry the Second sells Fordlandia back to Brazil for a fraction of its cost. Then, in nineteen forty-five, Henry Ford retires from his company and leaves the neighborhood to spend time with his family and his dad. Then, in nineteen forty-seven, he dies in his home at the age eighty-nine. Well, everyone, that'll be all for me today.
You should really make a movie talking about that car.
Can you talk a little bit about how you built your car, buddy?
How we built this car is with my dad. We built this with everything that people would usually throw away from Amazon. You can see that we used bubble wrap. Uh, if you look down here on the bottom, it shows that you, we used a cap, ice cream cap. And on the other side below it, we used like those jelly caps. And we also used some toilet paper rolls, same with back here. And at Ace, we bought like these little candles for like toys.
Should I turn it around so you can see it?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do it together?
Yeah, it's actually not that handy at all.
Yeah, just wanna make sure we don't mess something up on. All right, thank you.
And, and right here, we used like those little pans. And at Ace, we bought some pool needles for the wheels. And we use it for this fifth, this extra wheel. And right here, we use some Amazon boxes and some other boxes to create the back fender, the front fender, the other back fender, the front fender. And, uh, and some. And if we turn this back around again. We bought something at Ace, which we could use as a little cup cap. Right here, we use this spray can, two blocks, well, one block, the can, the spray can, the good one, right? Right here, my dad created this little Ford sign, which is like a big down low. And some cardboard for all this right here in the front. Then, right here, we use this whole part right here, this phone, even below its phone. And right here, we use some chewing tobacco caps and covered it with a yellow, a yellow construction paper and glitter.
Luke, let's see if they have any questions for you about this.
Did you look online to build this, or did you guys just do it right out of your head?
Uh, we looked, we looked at some pictures online.
Did you? It's impressive.
How long did it take to make?
Uh, it took like a few days. And right here, I created a poster board all by myself. We have the Ford V-eight, the old Henry Ford, the young Henry Ford. We have the timeline, the Ford warehouse, the logo, and Model T, finally, the timeline of his life.
I've gotta say, I'm impressed on how well you memorized it. When you were standing up there, I barely saw you look at your note cards.
Because I got pretty good at, when I was working with this, at, uh, I did this a week, accidentally a week before we had to do this.
So, why'd you pick?
Henry Ford. We, I picked Henry Ford, because he is my all-time hero, and because he created the first American car, and some of the best things that changed human history, like the spark plug and the V-eight engine.
Nice.
Good job, bud. Excellent. Great presentation.
We have a little camping lantern that we bought from Ace also, which I don't know how to, but can screw off.
Do you trust me to transport the car back to your house for you? Do I have to do that? Okay.
Should put it in there.
I should too, that's a good idea.
Let me get it out for you.
Need to drive it out?
Thank you, boys.
Hi, thank you.
Nice job. Mr. Stratt, we're gonna erase our next order gift.
Yep, today we have one of our juniors, Mr. Clark here, and he was one of the winners in the Erie Cup speech, right? Where'd you end up, bud?
Uh, first place for juniors.
First place for juniors. And his speech happens to be about the four-day school week, so there's a lot of pressure. You don't know how thick your hands in here right now, you kind of missed out on that, bud. But anyways, he's gonna do his speech for us right here.
Right now?
Yep.
Changed your mind.
All right.
Can we get out of the way?
Uh, it doesn't bother me that much, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Friday, probably the most anticipated day of the week. Students and teachers alike are counting down the seconds until they get to go home. The football players, on the other hand, consider themselves lucky. They left early this morning to go play at Glide. This leaves teachers with a dilemma. Do they go ahead and teach the planned lesson for the week and have the football players come back confused? Or do they postpone the lesson, giving their students busy work that doesn't help them with the lesson they're on? This is a scenario most teachers find themselves in weekly, and it's a lose-lose situation. So, how can we fix this issue? Four-day school weeks would solve this problem and would benefit the school, faculty, and students. This relatively new idea is being tried by schools across the world, and most receiving positive results from the switch. The Melstone School District reported a twenty percent, a twenty percent increase in attendance since switching to the new schedule. Jimmy Lederman, a superintendent at Jacowa County, reported a decrease in deferrals. He said deferrals went down seventy-five percent since implementing the new plan. So, what can students do with this extra day? For sports, the school could coordinate games to fall on Friday, so students don't have to miss a day, a day of school benefiting both the students and the teachers. Another benefit for students having Friday off is they can work another day of the week, helping to save up for the increase in price of college. One of my favorite quotes is "Teachers work for the outcome, not the income." I feel like this quote's spot on, because teaching can be such a difficult job, and since you have to go to college for five to six years, you need to love teaching in order to choose that as your career. Because of this, teaching is looking less and less appealing to younger generations. A study by the U.S. Department of Education said there'll be a teaching shortage in the United States looking on into the upcoming years.
There is.
Four-day school weeks could help solve this problem by increasing the appeal of teaching. Not only will it make teaching more appealing, but it will also make teaching more enjoyable. I know especially here in Lakeview, there are some teachers that have to plan for three to four different classes every single day. A four-day school week would give these teachers more time to plan their classes, which would benefit both the students and the teachers. The final reason we should switch to a four-day school week is the cost saving. This new schedule could save anywhere from two to five percent. This may not seem like a lot, but if you take into consideration our school's district budget for this year was nine million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, this would mean at worst we'd save close to two hundred thousand dollars, and at best save close to five hundred thousand dollars. This extra funding could go to areas a school cannot previously support. The school has been able to fund a few clubs such as cheerleading, youth mentor, and speed team, but with this extra money, we could fund, ah, I already said that. I already have, um, let's go to the next one. Another area this funding can go to is a tag program. This would offer children who are gifted in certain areas to have classes at their level, helping them improve their gifts. The AP program would also benefit from this funding, because we could pay for the required classes teachers have to take in order to offer these courses. As you can see, there are multiple benefits to switching to a four-day school. So, possibly, in the future, teachers and students alike might start looking for the Thursday instead of Friday.
Could you email me a copy of your speech?
Sure.
Did you plant it here tonight?
What was your question?
Did you plant it here tonight?
Did you have a standing ovation during that? As a side point, I taught in two school districts that have been on a four-day school district, forty-week, and we loved it. They've saved lots of money protecting transportation.
Email me that speech.
All right, hello.
Because I start talking to these folks, I'll have more data.
I didn't know what is, I missed the junior speech, so I didn't hear his speech, so I had no idea until I went, I went and asked him, I go, oh, perfect. This is a perfect timing, so anyways, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
You're very calm when you present to the public.
Turns out, it looks like that on the outside.
Good job, Tyler. Good information and good presentation, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, guys. Well, have a nice evening.
See you, Tyler. Uh, Mr. Stratt, who's the next one of yours?
Uh, yes, it is. I have Mr. Bear. Mr. Bear teaches a class called Game Design, and this year, he, he went with more of what we call Board Game Design. And he had a handful of students do a phenomenal job, and he's, did you bring one or two today, Mr. Bear?
I brought two of them. I had a student that was gonna bring, she was supposed to be here, I brought the computer, because she designed my computer, so.
Okay, awesome, so I'm gonna turn over Mr. Bear in our high school game design class.
I had two major projects for the kids this year, and one was on the computer, and one was a board game. Actually, the trademarked patent office calls it a parlor games, they're not board games. I had, kids had to come up with a concept, went through problems that you have designing board, or any type of game, whether it's a computer game, board game, be it a sport like the ones I've designed. They had to come up with their own rules, from the rules they had to develop the concept of what they're gonna do for these things, and they went through several different stages. I brought two of the, once, two Katie girls. One said she was gonna be here, and the other one said she couldn't make it, because of track meet. This one here by Katie Coker. Give you an example of some of the stuff, I like this right here. Because this has to do with eggs, it's an exciting game. She made this little basket that you put little eggs in, and the eggs are the ones that move around the board right here. And she made these little foot pieces that you're probably all familiar with. Things you have to do when you land on these in the sports spirit, put your pieces that are going through on there. I talked to some of the students, some of you all familiar with the website Kickstarter? Kickstarter is a website that you can go on and try to find financing for some of the projects you wanna do. I suggested that kids, help them particularly submit their ideas to Kickstarter, and show them the Kickstarter website, and how possible it is they could do so they could earn money, not even have to go and collect a record and design a thing. So, that was on egg design. This one here, I think, with track and field. Kaylee Schneider. Track and class, I think, probably familiar with her. She designed this game on going around the track, and the kids had to make their own little pieces with the whitties. These are players or shoes, or track shoes that go around here. One of the problems that they had to do was create a box presentation for the game, so that's why I brought these in here, boxes. Some of them had cards, the different types of score sheets that they had come up with. Any questions?
So, after they designed them, how, did they play them a bunch, or was it not as fun as they thought it would be?
Actually, during the design process, I had the kids try without, or tried with students, and they go back and rewrite the rules, and maybe make some design changes. But, yeah, the kids got to play with it, so that was one of the parts of the design, it was in the development stage, was actually playing with it. You may have said this already, but were these two of the top ones? Yes, these were two of the top ones, yeah. And Kaylee Coker had taken game design last year, and designed a game on a computer. We use Construct Two on the computers, it's a new version now. Construct Three, which is a free program that you can use and download on computers. They have Construct Three out now, and Mr. Reese was on the computers, make sure that they're all on somewhere from last year. And they also had to do some other graphics programs on there, so they designed some of the graphic stuff in those programs before they transferred to Construct Two. Sorry, you didn't get to see. Very good.
What was the name of the graphic program?
Construct Two. Yeah, you can free download it, it's on my computer.
Thank you.
Very innovative, thank you, Bob. Mr. Stratt, you're up.
Yeah, I'm on a roll, and now we have Miss Bauer. This is terrible. And she's gonna talk to you about the field trip that they went on, that was pretty awesome. She was, she sent me pictures each day of what they were doing and stuff, so I was pretty excited. Sounds like you kids had a great time seeing some of our older horticulture and floral industries on the I-five. And you don't think about until you make a trip up there, how much agriculture and stuff's going on, especially this year when we did our football games. We went through some of those towns, I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot about all these nurseries and hops farms, and I didn't realize how much hazelnuts have taken off. When I was here ten years ago, there was not that much hazelnut in there, but hazelnuts have really taken off. So, I think it's really cool that our kids can see something like that, and also see something than, than what they just see like here in the county, which would be grass or alfalfa, to go out and see something, so I'm excited about this field trip. Thank you, as the letter said, she goes, like, we have a student too to help out.
So, Ryland Knight came with me, he's been in horticulture two years, and floral design for semester, he was semester last year. So, this is his second field trip, he had a chance to go on.
I did.
Um, so we went March seventh, eighth, and ninth, and it was not the best trip over, we had a great bus driver though, thanks to Joe. The roads were kind of nasty on the way over, and of course, they were still cleaning up all this stuff on Highway fifty-eight. But our first stop was Oregon Flowers, Inc. It's a family run nursery, I think they're on, was it second generation, second or third generation?
Third generation.
And they do cut flowers, so they grow lilies and tulips, calla lilies. I think those were the main ones that they do for cut flower industry, very high-tech. His family background goes back to the Netherlands, so they have a lot of Dutch influence. So, this is kind of how they start out, these are little lilies just coming in, and they use these boxes. And they actually have a robot, we didn't get to see the robot, but the robot comes in and moves a lot of these boxes out and then back in. So, it's a rotation, when you look in the greenhouses, you'll see these boxes just starting to come up, and then you'll see ones that are up a little bit further. And then this picture that had some of the students in it, these are lilies that are ready to be cut. And it's kind of interesting, because I know the kids went there thinking they would see all of these beautiful flowers and bloom, but they're, it wasn't, they're green. Because they harvest them not quite open, so that when they do finally get to wherever they're going, they open up and are perfect for the consumer. So, you would think you'd go in and just see flowers everywhere, there'd be a few here and there, but it's mostly stuff that's budded. Um, they have quite a big workforce, and he said they really tried to work at keeping their employees busy year-round. And he really talked, his name was Tyler Messkers, he talked a lot to the students, that he wasn't a really great student when he was in school, and so there are opportunities if you are just wanting to go out into the workforce, or if you wanna get a four-year, two-year education. But he said, you know, the big key is really hard work and dedication, so that was a really good message. And this is kind of their final stage where they're processing, and all of these flowers are sold, and we're getting ready to be shipped out to Portland Airport to go to different places, so. It was kind of cool for the floral kids, because our wholesaler we use, they do buy tulips and lilies from here, so the flowers that we use doesn't come in there. Anything you wanna add, Ryan?
Um, I'm just gonna say it was a very, very nice, fun place to visit. Guy gave some very great advice about, you know, if you're not always going to school, but if you have a good, strong work ethic, it pays off in the end.
Um, it was super, super high-tech, very, very clean nursery, and then, like I said, just really family-oriented. He talked about pesticide use, they try to really limit it, because he has little kids, and they have, you know, big concrete walkways through there. And so he said his kids love to ride their bikes in there when it's rainy, so he says they really try to keep it pretty low use on pesticides. But that was a great first stop.
What is the wage there?
He didn't tell us, we didn't ask.
Where is it at?
It is in Aurora, so most of the places were, kind of Woodburn was the central area, and Aurora, Jervis, one place in Salem. One of the things in some of our students that went are Hispanic students, and they noticed that a lot of the workers are Hispanic as well, and he said some of them have been with them for thirty-some years, so, you know, they try to, to keep them busy year-round, and really try to create a family atmosphere for their workers too. Our second stop, so I always like to try to do one educational stop as far as doing either a two-year program or a four-year program. So, last year, we went to, or the last trip we did, Oregon State, so trying to alternate between community college options and university options. So, we went to Clackamas, which we have dual credit opportunities through there, and we got to meet with their admissions, an admissions counselor. They had a student that gave us a campus tour, and then we met with their horticulture department, and so this is her April Chastain. And she was kind of touring us through their greenhouse, they were getting ready for plant sale from Mother's Day too. And they had some tropical foliage plants, and all the kids got to take one home. So, that was kind of fun, they all had their plants, and they went into the hotel every day, and we got new plants at every place. They looked like they had little emotional support plants. And so this is kind of their classroom, and she had a couple presentations for the students. One of the areas she hit on was arboriculture, which is becoming a more popular field for students, especially students that are really into athletics, because they get to do a lot of climbing with the trees, and so that's a really popular field, they're seeing a lot of people go into. And then she also shared with us that they do a big competition. It changes every year, doesn't it, where they go?
Did you guys, they did a landscaping one, and then a floral one?
Yeah, so it's kind of like, you know, a big college bowl where all these different colleges come, and they have different areas where they do floral design, they do landscaping projects, they do plant ID, and so she was showing us their video from the last trip they took from that. And I know Ryland's thinking about going to Clackamas, so he was kind of excited to visit here. Um, so the next morning, this was a really cool stop, microplant nursery, and when you think of nursery, you think about greenhouses or fields. It looks like kind of just a big warehouse, or just a big building, industrial building. And they do everything from tissue culture, so in this one little jar, they could have potentially hundreds of different plants that they will divide up and grow, so they can grow thousands of plants very, very quickly in a small space. And this is all of their storage for all their different medias, it all depends on what kind of hormones the plants like to initiate roots. So, they kind of know from research what different plants like, what different medias to grow in.
Was that vegetables, was that flowers, where were they grown in?
That was actually, I think, maple trees.
Wow.
Yeah, so, um, they, they do a lot of maple trees, they do hazelnuts, blueberries. I noticed when we looked in one of their big storage area, they had some new perennials that are on, that I pre-ordered actually for next year. And when we asked them, I said, oh, who's getting those, and he said, can't tell you. So, it's like top secret, like they, they won't tell who's growing them that they contract with, so it's kind of top secret, like who might be getting these different varieties to market. And they're, it's pretty disease-resistant, they can ship stuff easily with it, so, you know, they have millions of plants in this one little area. And the kids really liked it there, they had all the different containers they were looking at, and again, I think those were all maple trees. So, he said a lot of hazelnuts, blueberries, different stock that you see out in the fields. He said there's a good chance, probably at least a fifty percent chance, that it may have originated with their nursery. And it just looks like a really scientific lab, they have a lot of workers in there cutting and dividing plants, creating the media. So, that was a really interesting stop. We went to Alpha Nursery, this is in Salem, and they are a large grower of mostly shrubs and trees. Unfortunately, the weather was kind of crummy that day, so we probably didn't get to see as much as we would have liked to outside. But these are all cuttings, they had workers that were, they just, they take a mother plant, and they'll just take cuttings off it, and they dip it into the rooting hormone, and then they just have hundreds and hundreds of these flats that they're growing cuttings out. So, it's kind of interesting, because he said, you know, it's generally probably a two-to-three-year process before they will even be able to ship out a gallon, so there's a big investment before they see a return. They also do, the kids took, some of these were pictures the kids sent me that they took, and they liked these topiaries, so they do some special topiaries that they make from shrubs. They do a lot of grafting, we didn't get to really see that. But just lots and lots of shrubs. This was some of the grafting he talked about for Japanese maples. Not really a great seller for here, but over in the Willamette Valley, they sell tons of Japanese maples. And so he was showing the kids where they had done grafting. Anything on Alfie, something Ryland?
That was really cold.
It was very cold.
It was a cold day.
Cold and rainy. This was one of the, this is always one of the kids' most favorite stocks, Vessler Nursery. And they have several different big greenhouses. They're a wholesaler for bedding plants, but they also have a tropical foliage division. So this huge greenhouse is just like all tropical plants. It looks like a jungle and the kids love it. There's also cactus and succulents in there, but they had a lot of pictures they took in there of the foliage plants. He also had some really interesting biologicals that they use. They put predatory mite sachets, they're just like little bags. We're actually, I think, gonna try some as a prevention. And you just put them in your hanging baskets and the little mites just crawl out and they'll prey on the harmful insects. So that was kind of a fun thing that he says.
Was that the three-stage process he was talking about?
I think so.
Where it lays bugs and then lays eggs, eat those bugs and then bugs eat bugs. Yeah.
Lots and lots of hanging baskets. They do lots of hanging baskets. And this was our tour guide, Dawn Spence. So he was really interesting. And they have a lot of equipment. Rowdy Gerber, that one especially liked this, cause he's really into mechanics. So this was a specialized machine where they take the little tiny, tiny plants, create a plug, and then it, the machine sticks them into the soil. So they have been able to kind of change their labor this way. The nursery industry is having a really hard time finding enough workers to fill the jobs. So they're looking for ways to automate the things they can and then move the workers they do have into areas they can't automate. So the equipment was kind of interesting for them to see. We went to Bowman Farms. The kids, I didn't get any pictures there. I think they were so excited. They had a petting zoo there. And so there was just selfies with alpacas. But they did have a great time at that nursery. They really liked how family oriented is. They have like, I think at their peak, a hundred and fifty employees and a lot of them are family members. But they've expanded from just the mom and dad selling at a roadside stand, selling produce, to expanding to where they have a full bakery, produce section, gardening gift section, and then the nursery. And then they do a pumpkin patch and a big fall festival. So the kids really liked seeing how they had been so innovative to kind of make it more than just, you know, this little roadside stand that they started with. On our final morning, coming back on Saturday morning, we stopped in Corvallis at the USDA Conal Germplasm Repository. They've got a variety of these all over the US. The one in Corvallis works mostly on like blueberries, blackberries, raspberries, pears. So it's a lot of fruit crops. And they try to collect all the different species and store both samples of live plant, but they'll also have seeds and sometimes tissue culture. So if a grower wants to try to create a new plant, they can call them and they can get different plants to try to do those cross breeding trials. Or if there was like a catastrophe, they would have some of these different crops that they could create again. So they had some quinces and bloom. And it was kind of fun because you could see on the tag for each plant, it tells what the plant is, but it tells where they collected it from. So the kids would see a lot of tags that would say China, Japan, Russia. And so that was kind of interesting because a job opportunity would be in this type of field where you get to travel the world and look for new species of plants, especially wild species. And lots of lab equipment. It kind of looked like NCIS in there where they can do DNA sampling and things like that.
Genetic decoding.
Mm-hmm. And so that was, that was our trip.
So Ryland, how many classes have you taken?
I've taken Horticulture, Advanced Horticulture, and Floral Design and this next year, next, Advanced Hortu, Advanced Floral Design.
Did you know that you kind of liked this prior to being a freshman or how'd you get rolling into this?
First year of Horticulture.
Okay.
I just took with it. It's something I'm very interested in. I can really grow flowers.
Yeah?
Yeah, we've grown, done that flower sale for two years now and it's always a good time, lots of people.
Your work is beautiful too.
Awesome. So did you, were you in the class that made some of the flower arrangements too that we had there in the front?
Not this year. Ryland did last year's floral design, yeah.
And so you're thinking of going to Clackamas?
Yes.
So yeah, I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, obviously I can take the kids down to Bloomers and they can see what we do in our greenhouse. But to see how big the industry is and a lot of the different areas, just like working for the government or, you know, doing specialized grafting, tissue culture, so kids that are really into science. And that they can see you can have, you know, just a high school diploma and get out and work really hard and move your way up. Or there is opportunities if you want to, you know, get your PhD. So I think that gives them a really broad spectrum of the industry.
Still a liberal industry in Oregon.
I think so. And like Mr. Stratton said, hazelnuts are just huge right now. They're planting so many hazelnuts. Blueberries are really taking off too. So yeah, it continues to be a really big, big field.
Thank you.
And we do, our maintenance department did a great job and we've got our new cold frame up that we used with some Measure ninety-eight funds from the last grant that we had. So it's filled up and being put to use and more exciting plans.
They already hired Quinn.
Yeah.
Inside there.
Yeah, so I felt bad for him some days. He did not have very good weather out there and the directions were sketchy.
Well, and he missed the memo that he didn't have to be out there in the snow, sleet, and rain.
I sent him a message. I said, you can ask Janet, but I said, I'm not in that big of a push that you have to be out there in that weather, but.
He come out and he goes, I don't have to be out there.
But it is really nice that we have that extra space. I know Janet was in there, her and Candy last year and it's like, you need more space. So it's kind of nice. We do have the room. We've moved all of the pansies in there. We're trying some roses this year and we've got some early spring hanging baskets. So all those that could handle the, a little cooler temperatures are in the cold frame. And then we just keep working at filling up the other greenhouse. We've got graduation. All the graduation planters are going right now. So feel free to stop by anytime you just want to.
And buying the graduation planters are perfect because she keeps them until after graduation, so you don't freeze them when you take them.
Yeah, it worked out pretty well for the seniors because they can get a lot of decorations and where we can resell them. They really don't have to have that expense, yeah.
Mother's Day weekend plant sale this year?
Mother's Day weekend plant sale. We'll hope for decent weather. So but feel free to stop by. We're always down there in the morning working and you can always come down in our locket for you guys anytime if you want to take a peek in, so. Come over. We actually are kind of behind on planting, cause with the advanced class this year, we don't have quite as many students cause they had to have the prerequisite of having taken the first horticulture. And so if you want to come, we'll put you to work too.
Oh, no. No, that's not the question.
That wasn't the idea. Emma said she would like to come down and plant with me one day, so.
Moving on to old business.
How about that?
See, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryland.
Thank you guys.
New business?
And we have a little reminder. This is the first line. Mrs. Warner headed back to her conference and I'll take it here. This year on the textbook adoption, some of that social studies. Traditionally at an elementary level, you really don't have social studies curriculum in K through three. Social studies, it doesn't really engage until the fourth grade, so B four, five, six. So Mrs. Warner's request, and this is at consultation with her teachers and everything, is to waive the adoption in this cycle. I feel like the materials they have are adequate and they constantly, you know, through the budget cycle each year, supplement those materials and keep them up to date. Per policy, you know, in order to do an adoption waiver, we have to have board approval. So that's, you know, why I'm asking for your approval of waiving Fremont Hay and Union Social Studies adoption for this year. Questions?
When is the next cycle open?
It's seven-year cycles. All the adoptions are under the seven-year cycle.
So it'll be fourteen years before we're done with the program?
Well, maybe fourteen years on this one work that we're on now, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Maybe fourteen years. But once again, they do a lot of, you know, supplementings what they've been doing, so they're satisfied with what they have. You know, the world of assessment, you know, in my earlier as a teacher and also as a principal of middle school, social studies used to be a part of assessment. But in the great state of Oregon, it is not a part of assessment. So there's been much debate among social studies teachers, social studies professionals at the ODE level, and it hasn't come to fruition yet. I couldn't agree, I really couldn't agree on much of anything as far as what, you know, the social studies assessment should look like, so anyway.
I move to approve the postponement of the elementary school studies curriculum until the next adoption cycle is presented.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stratton at some point, one real quick interjection here. Mr. Stratton at some point. Per policy, again, when he gets his materials together, he will bring them here for your review and also to officially, you know, adopt through a new business item. And we're probably a meeting or two away from that, you think?
We're either meeting tonight or tomorrow night to start wrapping it up.
Okay, so anyway, thank you.
No pressure.
Ten point two is the budget calendar approval.
Okay, so speaking of no pressure, May twenty-first.
Yeah, I got it.
Essentially, the most important dates that really come out of this, cause a lot of this is publications and then regular school board meetings that I've mixed in here. May twenty-first, primarily the first budget meeting and then June fourth. And if we need it by some weird chance, June eleventh. But generally, I don't need that third meeting to get by all of it. So I'm asking for approval of budget committee dates. Of course, June twenty-sixth would be our last and final approval. I move, I move to approve the budget count for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty as presented.
Do I have a ticket? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Ten point three, tap.
Okay, so we've got two taps on agenda tonight. The first one is in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars we were awarded for radon testing. And to put, put together a radon plan, which is now mandatory for us.
Through a new law.
And so what we've done is listed on here in Exhibit B, which I don't, I apologize, I don't know what the page number is for you guys, but it would include all of the schools, Fremont, AD Hay, Union Daily, Middle School, and Lakeview High School. The cost that we could gather the twenty-five thousand against would be any testing kit costs, lab fees, shipping fees, test, additional test controls as needed to ensure accuracy of the test, staff time consultant fees for persons setting up test equipment and conducting the testing, and cost for facility managers, custodians, and other key staff to attend trainings for radon testing and mitigation, including associated travel costs. So this is coming straight from ODE, any amount of twenty-five thousand, just seeking approval to move forward.
Move to approve the tap in regard to hazard assessment grant agreement as presented.
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Ten point four, okay.
I was waiting for you and you sorry, I almost cut you off. Okay, this one is twenty-five thousand also. This is the long-range facility plan, which if you recall a couple of meetings ago, we, we accepted with cooperative strategies to begin facilitating that long-range facility, which they did charge us, or will be charging us twenty-five thousand plus travel costs. So that offsets our twenty-five thousand right here within this grant, which is good news. This includes all of the, the facilities in regards to getting a long-range facility project put together in conjunction with cooperative strategies. So again, another twenty-five thousand from ODE.
Move to approve tap, long-range plan to be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eleven, who told the agenda? There, well, do we add a couple of volunteers? Doesn't matter, right? We don't actually, we didn't have any, anything.
It's, it's working. Nothing, no changes.
They're for your approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Announcements.
I've done that, sure.
Next board meeting agenda items?
Got quite a list. OSBA has sent me another batch of policies, so I'm gonna break those out and we'll hit them all at once, probably over the course of three meetings. And I'll be reviewing policies with you in a work session at five o'clock at that time. I have an ASB report, building principal's report, athletic director's report, special education. I'll have a resolution for celebration and recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week, which is May sixth through tenth. We'll have a discussion of graduation ceremonies, which, you know, your board members will like to be a diploma presenter, speaker, whatever. So that's when we have that discussion. Then we have LOE negotiation dates and negotiation team established, new business item. And then we will be having an overnight trip field request from Mrs. Kohat in regard to Music in May. So it's really great to have some students going. You want to comment on Music in May real fast?
We have thirteen students going. I don't know if we've ever had that many in Music in May.
I don't think we've ever had that many.
I know we've had probably that many too when they go.
Or not since the seventies.
The adjudication stuff about Music in May. So we're really excited to have thirteen high school students who want to go.
Where do they go?
Forest Grove. Forest Grove. It's called Music in May.
Bay and Choir.
Yeah, they're gonna leave like on Thursday, get there, and then they have a list of things Friday through Saturday.
Fantastic experience.
Really excited, cause if you get kids excited about music, they usually come back next year and you get a couple friends with them to come back and hopefully we're on the right track of rebuilding that program.
And is the special education director report, is that Lonnie's team's report?
No, that's bumped out again. And those results.
It's a long one.
Yeah, those results just came in too and there were some reports tonight that deserved to get.
For sure.
Yeah, so we just had, we had to bump it out. And she was totally fine with that. Actually, she was better with that.
She was just like, yeah.
She was raised. So the healthy team.
She's at conferences this evening, so.
Yeah, healthy team will be coming, just not.
I like to read them. I don't know that we need a time to discuss them, maybe here or there.
It's very, very good information.
Yeah, I think you're gonna see it in May.
I had to see if there's an inquiry that says, oh, I like to bring knives to school. I wonder if.
Oh, super easy.
I mean, where else are they gonna post their honesty? Or maybe they're messing with us. But I read them. I don't know that they're that honest. I'm not saying that I want that. I'm just saying I think that sometimes it gives you a hit.
I got two magazines in the mail the other day that kind of go with that and the date if you want to come by and grab one out. I'd be glad to let you borrow.
Out of our kids?
Yeah, I think it's statewide. I haven't quite thumbed through to see what it was. I've never received one before, but it's about.
The specific questions on our healthy team survey are some of the more pertinent ones that you have. They ask some very like lengthy questions to the kids and I.
There's, there's some good stuff in it.
I would, so.
Yeah, I just don't know that I have that much faith in what they put down there. Yeah, I just don't know that I have that much faith in what they put down there.
Well, there's that too.
I think it's kind of mixed bag, a little view. That's all I have.
So it would just be.
I move to that region.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.